Ketchikan City Council to order, please call the roll.
Seivertson?
Here.
Kuiper?
Here.
Kous?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Flor?
Here.
Please join me on the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to public hearing and resolution eighteen twenty-six eighty-nine amending the two thousand and eighteen general government operating capital budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the museum department for a amount of four thousand seven hundred dollars. Anybody here to speak to that tonight? CNN will pass, move on to communications. On communications, I have a proclamation for Elizabeth Pradovitch today I'd like to read. This is an official proclamation of the city. Whereas the greatest asset of our nation, state, and our community is its people, whose heritage reflects the diversity of the ethnic and cultural groups which have made significant contributions throughout our history, whereas individuals like Elizabeth Pradovitch have contributed to the diversity which has made this nation strong by fighting for equal rights of all Alaskans and all Americans. Whereas Grand Camp President of Alaska Native Sisterhood Elizabeth Pradovitch spearheaded the civil rights movement in Alaska by communicating her personal vision and providing crucial testimony that inspired and persuaded the territorial legislature to pass legislation designed to equality for all Alaskans, whereas her speech, whereas after her speech, the galleries and some of the centers gave her rousing applause recognizing her passion and support for equal rights. Whereas due in large part for her moving testimony, the legislature passed the Anti-Discrimination Act of nineteen forty-five, and on February sixteen nineteen forty-five earnest greeting, Governor of the Territory of Alaska signed a legislation into law which ensured the dignity and equality of Alaska natives. And whereas the passage of this first anti-discrimination bill in Alaska occurred nearly twenty years before the Federal Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four. Now therefore be resolved that Ilu Williams, the third mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim February sixteenth as Elizabeth Pradovitch Day and encourage all residents to recognize the great contribution Elizabeth Pradovitch made to the state of Alaska and his people by fighting for equality for all Alaskans and to recognize the diversity in our community and honor those individuals who continue to work, who continue the work of Elizabeth Pradovitch every day to enhance understanding and appreciation among all people of this community. Is there anybody here to accept the proclamation? Come on up. Thank you for coming and make sure you tell everybody what's happening tomorrow.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we're having a celebration at the Discovery Center starting at six o'clock PM. We're, I'm Kevin Hall, and I'm very proud and humbled to be a part of the Alaska Native Brotherhood in this celebration for tomorrow and be a part of Camp fourteen. We're also hosting Grand Camp later on this year for the all-in-chapters, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you.
I want to thank you from Camp fourteen for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, that brings us down to persons to be heard. I have three people signed up so far. Agnes? Oh, and Sam too.
She brought her legal counsel.
And sometimes I do kick him, just kidding. We're here on seven A six, the sale of six twenty-three Gateway Court Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility. As you know, in the past, Wish has expressed an interest in that property. Recently, Wish put together with First City Homeless Services, we just submitted a grant to the Department of Justice, FFW, for transitional housing. That's one thing that's really lacking in town here. We figure we could get eleven units initially of transitional housing into the Kiff facility for a short-term plan for that building for three years, followed on with, by that time we would be in a position to renovate that facility into a shelter. There's two big drawbacks to that facility, and you guys are probably experiencing it. A, the cost of renovating it is very, very high because it's such a secure facility. And B, the cost of operating it in its current configuration is also high. You know, if you look at the numbers from two thousand and fifteen, the utilities on that building alone for water, electric, and heat was thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is pretty much beyond the scope of any nonprofit to run it in its current configuration. And I think that's probably part of the reason why you're going to have trouble just handing it off to somebody, because until you can get in there and renovate and do something about the electricity and do something about that maximum-sized water pipe, I don't think there's anybody in town that can afford to run it in its current state. That being said, I think it is a community resource, and I think there's folks out there in the community that have a lot of ideas for it. For example, it could be transitional housing in the short term. It could be renovated into, you know, a new safe, secure women's shelter in its next stage. It could be housing first. It could be a lot of different things, depending on what your timing is. But I don't think there's probably a nonprofit in town that can afford the thirty-seven thousand a year in its current configuration to operate it. But we did go ahead, we took a leap of faith. We won't hear until probably September or maybe even October first when the grant kicks off if we, if we're in the running for it. But we know a hundred percent you won't get it if you don't apply, so we went ahead and applied. It was an interesting ten days, let me tell you, putting that together. But we partnered with First City Homeless Services because we believed that, A, first of all, the grant required a partner, but we believed that that is a group of people up there that really has been underserved by the community as far as trying to move them forward. And that was part of the goal of partnering with First City Homeless Services was to put an advocate there and seeing if we can get some of those folks into, qualify for the transitional housing project. So we have ideas. Right now, we don't have many. We're working on both. But I know you guys have a tough decision ahead of you tonight. I can stay if you want to address any further questions, or I can just kind of fade out of here. I'm open, I'm open for questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Agnes, now?
Would you like me to stay or not?
That's up to you. I don't know what the council's going to do. I mean, we've got to find out something to make that building useful for some.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I've been looking at that building hard for a year now, and the big drawback to it is you've got that maximum-sized water pipe that runs you a thousand bucks a month in water. The utility bills on that, I think, were fourteen thousand for, I'm doing this from memory, I apologize, I think it was fourteen thousand for fuel oil and twelve thousand for electricity. I think you can bring the electricity costs down just by not running it as a JL. You're going to have to do something about the diameter of that water pipe to get the water fees down, and I think, I'm not sure how they operated it to have a fourteen thousand dollar a year heating bill, but there's probably things you can do there too. That's one of the reasons we've been interested in it for a shelter.
We'll take any consideration.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Chris? Thank you very much. Next, Matt.
Hi, guys. Matt Armstrong, just wanted to introduce you guys to the new First City Players President for the Board of Governors. Oh, I guess that's me.
Very good.
So, at our January meeting, they decided to make me president, and it's been more than a month, and we're still kicking, so off to a good start. And just wanted to tell you guys about some of the things that we have been doing and some of the things we have coming up. Last month in January, we had a very successful jazz and cabaret festival. A couple of council members were onstage for it. We had good crowds both nights, and the musicians that we bring up every year, of course, went around and worked with local, local schools with the jazz programs there, and, you know, it was a very successful event. Right now, we have our Star Path classes going on. We have fifty-five schoolchildren grades, you know, before, pre-K through high school, enrolled in it this year, and they're working towards an adaptation of Charlotte's Web, which is our multi-generational play that we'll be doing in April. Auditions for Charlotte's Web are Monday and Tuesday at First City Players. And later on in, or before, before Charlotte's Web, we have Sense and Sensibility. It's an adaptation of the Jane Austen novel. Taylor McKenna is directing it, and it's sort of a fun upbeat Jane Austen meets Monty Python play that's been a lot of fun to work on. We have that coming up in March, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, thirtieth, and thirty-first at the Saxon Tribal House. So we have a lot of stuff going on, and we, you know, invite you to, you know, come down to the, come down to our office at the old fireside to see, you know, what we, what all we've been up to. We've done some minor upgrades around the building, added some new lighting to make it sort of a more welcoming environment to people, for people to come into. So I guess if you have any questions, I can try and answer them. And again, just come out, see us play, come out, audition if you want to be in a show. We take all ages, and we usually have a lot of fun.
Any questions for Matt? Hey, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
Don't be a stranger. All right? Yeah. Ed, there you are.
Good evening. My name's Ed Frisinger. I'm from Peace Health Ketchikan Medical Center. Just a few things. One of them is I want to thank you all for hosting us at the end of last year to provide an update on some of the activities and work we're doing up at the hospital. But also just want to reinforce that as the city is evaluating pricing transparency, and if you are evaluating the development of an ordinance, number one, we support pricing transparency, and we are ready, willing, and able to be a part of the process, along with others in the community. So I wanted to come up and share that. Also, just give a couple little brief updates. We've been successful in some recruiting efforts. We recruited another internal medicine physician who'll be joining us in the next few months, as well as a nurse practitioner, and we have others that we have coming in over the course of the next few weeks for interviews. So we're seeing some good progress in our recruiting efforts, much of which is the excitement around the facilities we have. So thank you very much for the support of the building and having that there. Other things we're working on is, one item in the community that's come up is for members of the community for wheelchairs. Wheelchair fitting is a very important item, and we are going to be sending two of our therapists away for training on how to fit a wheelchair properly. So we're planning to offer that service before too long within our facility. And then pacemakers, we're working with cardiologists to not necessarily do pacemaker insertions, but to help address the power sources as those deplete. How do we replace them locally to help keep people from having to travel south? So again, I just wanted to say thank you and reinforce our interest in being a part of any ordinance development as it relates to pricing transparency and just provide you a brief update. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll make sure, we'll work on that, that we involve you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have nobody else signed up to speak to the council, so if you did sign up and would like to address the council tonight, now's the time. Anybody? All right, CNN, we'll move on into the agenda. Thank you. That brings us down to consent agenda. I was going to add unfinished business, A, one, two, and three, and that was, and then seven A four, Public Works Department, two thousand and eighteen program maintenance of city streets. Those are the only items I'd add. And if there's no objection?
Your Honor, I move to consent.
Moving second, Madam Secretary, we die.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of February first, two thousand and eighteen, resolution number eighteen twenty-six eighty-nine, amending the two thousand and eighteen general government operating and capital budget supplemental appropriation for the museum department of four thousand seven hundred dollars. Liquor license renewals, the VFW post forty-three fifty-two, and the Eagle's Nest. Appointments to boards and commissions from Mayor Williams as for the planning commission. Ordinance number eighteen eighteen sixty-eight, authorizing negotiation of an agreement with the Great Alaskan Lumberdach Show LLC and John R. Dawson for the pedestrian promenade amusement, Thomas Basin amusement. That's the second reading. Ordinance number eighteen eighteen sixty-four, amending mortgage fees and charges in chapter fourteen of the Ketchikan Municipal Code in second reading, and budget transfers for the Public Works Department's two thousand and eighteen program maintenance of city streets.
Anybody have any questions? Very good, then. Call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Kous?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flor?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seven A one, and our new business, contract seventeen thirty-five, update design, verse one, two, expansion, moppet and liquor. Steve? Let somebody introduce him.
Yes, Sean McFarlane from moppet and nickels is going to be doing a short presentation.
While we're setting up here, I'd like to introduce two key members of our team. Stephen Romanant was here two weeks ago with us when we did our public workshop for the uplands planning, and Stephen's been one of the principal authors on that work. And introducing you, I'm proud to introduce Janik Vagana, who works with us in Anchorage. Janik is going to be our lead designer for the Ketchikan and Swan two expansion, and we're going to give you a brief update on that tonight.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us meeting yesterday.
Well, as I mentioned, we're in town to do a public meeting yesterday. We had about two dozen people of the community come out and give great input and good discourse on the concepts that we're looking at for verse one and two, and we are moving towards a decision point for you that I'm going to talk about tonight and what that entails, and hopefully give you enough here in an abbreviated version of this to help you to be able to discuss that decision. So just to give you an update on the project to date, we've gone about as far as we can so far with the birth one and two expansion, focused on completion by March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty to welcome your new larger cruise ships. We've done our boundary survey, geotech survey just, the drilling survey just concluded the other day, and we're working towards a design advice from our geotech consultant on that. We've done a metocean condition study, basically a marine climate study, which we passed on to Steve for your use. That might be something that's useful for future projects. Also, specific to verse one and two, we've refined our conceptual layouts from the planning that we did with you about a year ago, and have gone through a high-level navigation and mooring analysis. And as I mentioned, Stephen was here a couple weeks ago to have our third of three meetings on the upland improvements that need to calibrate to the waterfront improvements, so that we're bringing people off the docks onto the shoreline who are still having a great passenger experience, although, even though there are many, many more people programmed to visit Ketchikan. So what we're going to talk about today, and what we talked about last night in depth, and we'll be asking for a decision moving forward, is option one versus option two. I'll tell you more about what those are. And quite simply, we're looking for a decision point here in early March from you, so that we can move forward into design and permitting for the project. The decision point is fueled, informed by a number of different ways to look at the project, and it comes out of the research, the analysis, and your, frankly, your community's feedback that we received to date. One of the important things that we're going to talk about is the impacts of these two options on what happens beyond berth one and the entrance to Thomas Basin, and some of the feedback we've received on that. Second one is navigational considerations, looking at how the larger ships will come in and be able to use berth one and berth two. And then thirdly, it's informed by the upland analyses and modeling that we've been doing. So jumping right into it, here's, here's our schedule for the work, and again, we are, we are focused on a very hard deadline to get berth one and two, two new floating docks with drive-down passenger access ramps and all the required birthing arrangements, bollards and dolphins, done by March of two thousand and twenty. So we're facing a couple of decision points here. Well, first of all, you gave us notice to proceed on this work in November, and we've been working very hard on the analysis. We're looking for a decision point here in early, you know, middle of first quarter of two thousand and eighteen, hopefully by early March. And then we will be moving into thirty-five percent design and then environmental permitting. And as we get into our sixty-five percent, or about two-thirds done with the design, we're going to be back before you with a supporting cost estimate by early October that you can move forward towards a bond initiative, so you can, you can decide to fund the project with a more reliable estimate. Just to remind you that this is not a new process, this, these are representative of the planning process that we started in May of two thousand and sixteen and concluded in December of twenty, of, excuse me, we concluded in, about a year ago, in January. And these were options we were looking at for the waterfront improvements for berth one, two, three, and four. And coming out of this planning exercise, we left a, kind of a big question mark as to what would be done on berth one and two. And as we went into that process, you may recall that berth one and two felt that this would be some future project that Ketchikan might engage, but even as we were working through that planning process, and certainly in the, in the year that's elapsed since then, the cruise industry has motioned that they'll be bringing these larger vessels in sooner than they originally anticipated. To now, we're at a point where this has become a very high priority project for the city to get it done in two thousand and twenty. But we're left with this decision point as to whether we make, we accommodate two larger vessels, one at berth two and one at berth one, or if we continue to accommodate your smaller vessel at berth two. It's kind of an oxymoron to say small vessels, because you're, you know, the small vessels we're talking about are still almost a thousand feet long, and you're talking about, about eleven hundred fifty feet on the large vessels. So we've used this typology, type A and type E. Type A represents the Panamax vessels that you have coming in up to nine hundred sixty feet. Type E are these largest class vessels, like the Quantum class, that will be coming by two thousand and twenty and looking for a place to moor. Okay, so here's, here's just some, you know, the environs of the work here, and we're, you know, very concerned when we move past the existing berth one fixed dock with these floats that were going to have, you know, collateral impacts to people using and accessing, egressing from Thomas Basin, but also to that area outlined in yellow to the south, which is a voluntary subscribe to mooring basin for the fishermen outside of Trident Seafoods and for your fishing community down there. So we want to be careful that we hear those voices and carefully measure what those collateral impacts are, including, you know, any, anything that we're putting out in the water that might become a new challenge to navigation or might cause people to have to route around them in a new way, and we're going to look at that as we move forward here. Just to give you an overview of option number one, and I'll show this to you graphically in a minute, but basically, option, option one says we're going to put the largest of these vessels at berth one. We're also going to allow some flexibility at berth one, so that we can have even the Panamax vessels in there as well. But it'll be designed to handle the largest of these vessels. But then berth two would continue to just welcome the Panamax vessels, which has been your kind of your largest standard to date. Both of these options, you'll see, involve the removal of the mooring dolphin that's right now at the Thomas Basin entrance, and building two new mooring dolphins further out. And what we can demonstrate just purely geometrically is there's a little opening of Thomas Basin, and Steve brought up the analogy, it's like redoing your driveway. So you're making your driveway wider, you're also making it longer, but it moves off your house in a different direction. So there's going to be some changes that we have to reconcile to moving forward. This is option number one, as it's, as it's drawn, you'll see this in much greater detail, and this is a level of detail further than what we developed in the very conceptual early stage. We brought this today and towards a meeting with cruise line agencies and the pilots and the city, and had a great ninety-minute work session around this today. And every, every time we come back to reiterate this design into a, you know, tighter design with more detail, we're going to, again, sit down with the pilots and with cruise lines to make sure that we have something that works. But that's, that's the current arrangement, what it looks like for berth one, and this is what it, what it looks like out in front of Thomas Basin, and this is certainly of interest to many who have, will use Thomas Basin in the entrance. This is your existing dolphin that will become redundant and will be taken out as part of this work. So you can see there's, this second radius represents, you know, a widening of this, this entrance channel. It's a little less tight than, than with the dolphin in there currently. However, we are going to be accommodating much larger vessels. We've got the float that's extending beyond the end of the fixed dock here, and two new mooring dolphins out here. And those two new mooring dolphins are what provide the flexibility to allow us to have these smaller ships. It's the Panamax ship in light yellow, and then the darker orange ship is your Quantum class or your type E vessel. So that's option one. Option two is, you know, very similar to option one, except that we're going to, we would be accommodating a larger ship at berth two up to this Quantum size. Now, I have to point out, and I haven't gone into detail here, but as part of the planning process that we worked together on about a year or so ago, one of the very initial steps was a market research study and talking with cruise lines and cruise line agencies and, and seeing what the demand was here. There's not currently demand for two of these larger Quantum sized ships, but the way things are going and with the, you know, what I consider phantasmic growth in the cruise industry, one might expect that down the road, Ketchikan might want to have some additional capacity, and you might not want to bind yourself into a corner. So it's an important decision point, and it's not an easy one, and it's one that you'll, you'll be wrestling through, I understand, maybe through an executive session in the next few weeks. But this also involves the removal of the mooring dolphin, opens up Thomas Basin, and has two, two new dolphins, but you'll see, you know, comparatively, the float here is much further beyond the fixed dock. It goes further out in front of Trident Seafoods here, and these two dolphins are, you know, it's about, what is it, a hundred sixty feet? About a hundred sixty feet further out than in option one. And that's, that's in order to accommodate the larger ships here. And there it is, there it is, it's more detail. So, I'm sorry, this is just the comparison of the two, so you see that with berth one, or sorry, the option one has the, the mooring dolphins here, option two has them here, and all these are subject to refinement. This is a, this is a layout that works, and if we had to go right to construction, we could build it this way today. It's not necessarily the optimal layout, and that's why we're, we're going to value working with the, with the pilots and longshoremen on this moving forward. So, so that, that's kind of the geometric challenges in talking about the two options. What we, we've analyzed these from a few different perspectives. One of them is looking at navigation, and what these, this vessel tracking is, this looks at, you know, entrances from the north to the south, and then from the south to the north at berth one. These are actual vessel tracks from the U.S. Coast Guard from two thousand and sixteen. That's the most recent information we had. And this is a type C vessel or breakaway class type vessel, and, and how that comes in and goes. And the reason I throw these up here, and they were a discussion point last night, is it's important to remember, we've got this rock pinnacle out here, this red, ominous red blotch, which is only about four thousand cubic yards of material, but we now know it's hard rock, it's going to have to be blasted, and because of that, it's going to be a more scrutiny permitting process. And with that comes some risk that we may not be able to get this permitted by the time these floats have to go into service in two thousand and twenty. We are working with you and for you on the permitting of this, and we have every reason to believe that we're going to go forward in getting it done on schedule, but there is some risk, and then if that, if that pinnacle doesn't come out, it has implications on moving a, a larger ship into berth two. And I'll switch over to berth two, so here are the same vessel tracks, both coming from the north and coming from the south, and you can see that here it's, it's quite tight up against the pinnacle, the, you know, having to get a ship in when there's already a ship here at berth one, which is a common configuration, or have it leave ahead of the, the berth one ship. So now, what you don't have shown on here is what those new alternatives are, and in building these floats out in front of berth one and berth two, a fifty-foot float moves the new pier headline fifty to sixty further, feet further out, you've also got a wider, beamier, less maneuverable ship coming into that slot, so you can see that this gets very, very tight indeed. And even, you know, as we confirmed with the pilots today, even with the current class of ships moving in there, a pinnacle's a real concern for them, and with the new ships, it's, it's, it's almost a no-go getting a larger ship into berth two with the pinnacle still in place. So this is one thing to consider, is just the, even though the pinnacle is coming out, we'll remove that navigational concern, because it's underwater blasting, because it's scrutinized, and in Tongus Narrows, there'll be all kinds of scrutiny on impacts to marine mammals and that sort of thing. There's no guarantee that this comes out by two thousand and twenty, and if that's the case, if you chose this option two, which has the larger ship at, at berth two, you could have risk in building a, a floating dock there that would be very difficult indeed to, to use for larger vessels until the pinnacle came out. So that's one, one facet, one, one thing that fuels your decision point. So there's just the features of that. So on the upland planning side, this was, we launched into this work in, when was that?
Eight months ago.
Yeah, about eight months ago, and we're about ready to bring this to a close in, in April, and these are some of the public comments that we had, and we don't need to go through them in detail, but I wanted to emphasize them in detail, but I wanted to emphasize that coming out of the waterfront planning, it's important to balance anything you do on the water side with improvements on the land side. Because for berth two, you've got going from the, the, the class of vessel that you have there now to a potentially a Quantum class vessel would represent a 90% increase in people coming off the, the ship. At berth one, because of the ships that you have currently there, hold a few more people, it's a 57% increase. So we've already determined that the best place to put, put one of these larger vessels is at berth one. And then because of that 50%, 7% increase and moving things off the dock, we're able to capture a little more area on the upland side, which, I'll just skip that slide for right now, which here at, at berth one, you know, we're going to be having to use all this area to get people off the ship efficiently and, you know, into, into tours and into the ground transportation area and up into town. And we're actually, this, we went through in detail two weeks ago, but on berth two, you know, bringing off people even in, in both directions are very, there's very little opportunity for the kind of expansion there that would support bringing 90% more people off a larger, a larger ship. And in fact, the, a lot of the corridor, let's just call it, that we would gain along the, along the edge of the dock here by virtue of putting this float and, and bringing the ship further off, a lot of that is being used here just to drive the buses down to, to berth one. So really, any improvements that we would make at, in the berth two area really go to support the larger vessel at berth one. So we are very concerned from an upland planning perspective at being able to accommodate this larger ship. Even though we could on the water side, what does that look like on the land side? The people visiting here are still going to have, you know, seven hours in port. They still want to get to their tours. You still want them to have plenty of time left over to be able to go and enjoy a meal or do the souvenir shopping in, in Ketchikan because that's a big part of, of your, your revenue here. So it's something to keep in mind moving forward. And there's just some of the, the figures I talked about. It's berth two, we're very concerned about really, you know, I think Dick Kuss said it when we first started off this upland planning, it's, we're not going to be able to make the roads any wider. And there are indeed places in the port where we don't have much room to do anything. Birth two is certainly one of those, those places on the uplands. So then, yeah, the third, we looked at navigation, we looked at geometric constraints, and we looked at the upplans. And this leads us, all three of these lead us to strongly recommend that you go with the option one, which has the, the larger ships at berth one only and continuing with the Panamax at berth two. One of the things that we've been working with cruise line agencies on is the distance between vessels. And we can, we can build a little extra flex into the system by going with 100 feet between vessels, even though cruise lines feel like, you know, on occasion. And when we had to, we've gone as little as 30 to 40 feet. And that allows a little bit of flex in the system to be able to accommodate potentially larger vessels as needed at berth two. For example, you have an elision of a cruise ship at berth three and have to shut it down, take a larger ship to berth two, it can be accommodated. So here's our next steps. We're, we're requesting a decision from, from council. I said by March 1st, but as early in March as possible. We're going to, we're going to advance into the design at, a little bit at risk in advance of your decision so that we can stay on schedule. We have some float in the schedule between now and getting it built in 2020, but we want to aggressively pursue the design so that we're reserving float for the more uncertainties like the construction process. So, but we would like your decision as soon as possible. We're going to continue with the 35% design, and those are needed to get our permit applications in. And I think we have 35% design scheduled to wrap up here by, is it end of March or something like that, this, this spring? Or I'm sorry, it's into May of this year. And then after that, we'll be refining to a 65% design. And the reason I mention these design deadlines is we're, we'd like to before the cruise season starts and then again, right after the 2018 cruise season, have another one of these 90-minute or two-hour work sessions with cruise line agencies and the pilots. And every time, we're going to come back with more and more detail and, and help them to, to help us to, to refine this into something that works. It was noted in the meeting today from the pilots that there were some, there were some challenges with the facility as built in Juneau because they didn't have that level of, of interaction with the users. And we're going to make sure that we get that along the way. So I just wanted to highlight that cruise line agencies and the pilots have been both very gracious and generous with their time, and we're going to, we're going to use them to the extent that we can. So that's our, our current update, and we're, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? My question is, I'm doing the berth one and two and doing, could we set up number two, like the number, option number two, and utilize smaller ships there until we need to have it be a larger vessel facility?
You mean to, to build it as though it would be?
And option two, but utilize it for the smaller ships, then we do it all at once instead of coming back again the day we have to handle two big ships there?
You certainly could, and, and both options are viable. I think what, what you will be balancing is that, you know, there is, has been some concern expressed by Trident Seafoods and also, you know, we, we anticipate some concern with users of Thomas Basin and a desire to move that, compress everything further to the north and to kind of limit the, the extension and, and berth. And option one certainly does that. You could design option two to handle the larger, larger ships. But again, the, the real thing that's counter indicating that is the uplands. And if you bring that larger ship in with so many more people, how are you going to handle them on the upland side?
So we'll never be able to put a larger ship there, the larger ship there?
You would be programming this in, in a way that you would not count on berth two for a larger ship, yeah.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you much, sir. We can't wait till the next presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You guys. All right, that brings us to 782 budget transfer amendment number one to contract 1715 design berth three improvements and barge overhaul Moffett Nickel.
Yeah, I move the city council approve amendment number one to contract number 1715 design of berth three improvements to barge overhaul between the city and Moffett Nichols in the amount of 73,800. Bring the total contract cost 511,720, authorize the budget transfer of 73,800 from the appropriate reserves of the Port Enterprise Fund to the Port Department berth three dock and dolphin repair and modification capital account. Approve funding from the Port Department berth three dry dock and dolphin repair and modification capital account and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Thanks, Bobby. Any comments?
Well, I just, I guess, ask Steve to explain exactly what we're doing here and why we're making the, the additional inspection services.
Steve?
Yes, Mayor Williams in council. When the contract was put together for the inspection services, it was all part of the design contract. And the reason it was such a big contract, it was design of the berth three improvements and design of the bigger barge contract as well. But some assumptions were made as to how long we would need inspection services on site, and we went with eight weeks and about eight hours a day. Due to the barge taking a little bit longer than vigor anticipated, it's, it's still within their, their contract timeline. It's not late, but it, it's taking a little longer there. We're finding a little bit more work that needs to be done on the recoding work at berth three, and they're working longer and later hours with the tides and that. So in order to adequately cover all this inspection time with Taku Engineering as the subconsultant, we've put them at 12 hours instead of eight hours as of about a week ago. And we're going to, and we're asking for basically a couple more weeks of them being on site as well. And their engineers are doing a fantastic job. They know more about coding and inspectionist stuff than I will ever.
Wanted to.
Yeah. And, and they're doing a fantastic job of, of making sure that we're getting what we're paying for and that we're not getting any substandard work. So that's basically what it is. What's not completely clear here, we are looking at probably about 2,400 square feet of additional coating work at berth three based on the actual inspection work as, as work commenced as we had these guys on site. We had 5,600 square feet in the contract, so that's going to take it up to about 8,000 square feet. So we will be coming back for a, a change order when we close this project out for the construction side of the house at berth three. But all that additional work is also part of the additional inspection work.
Anybody else have any questions? Call or roll?
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
That passes 7800, brings us down to 73 orders, 181871, increasing wastewater rates 6% first reading. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approve first reading orders number 181871, increasing wastewater rates by 6%, establishing a date for a public hearing and providing for an effective date.
Second. Moved in second. But what you will see on your bill is a $3 increase from 4,998 to 5,298, put it in plain terms. Anybody have any comments from the budget? Call or roll?
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 7800. We're going to be done for, that brings us down to 785. Ketchikan Fire Department Emergency Response Apparatus Assessment, Emergency Services Consulting International. Mark, do you want to take away that?
Sure. Move the city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Emergency Services Consulting International ESCI, ESCI of Wilsonville, Oregon to conduct an assessment of the fire department's emergency response apparatus at a cost of $8,433 and approve funding from the fire department's 2018 major apparatus replacement plan capital account.
Second.
Moved in second. Mark, do you have any comments?
Yeah. One of the things we talked about when this first came up was the opportunity to have a disinterested third party look at this equipment, somebody who had nothing to gain by coming up and telling us we need to do stuff to the, the equipment. Had a little bit of additional comments today from council member Seivertson that we may in fact want to consider a second opinion. But that being said, I think this is a good place to start with a, with a apparatus budget of $2.5 million. Spending 80, less than $8,500 seems prudent to me. I'm not always real big on consulting. I like to see things done in-house when possible, but the, the scope of this, I think, requires some expertise and some unemotional autopsy outside of the, of the city.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, and I agree with Mark that bringing in a third party and, and doing that, I look at the credentials, the ESCI, and under their, on the website, they have things we do. And they do a lot of things, but one of them wasn't specifically for the evaluation of fleets and, and that kind of stuff. But they do look at fire department evaluation, which I think would probably cover part of that. And then they gave some examples of some of the stuff they'd done. And my concern with that, and I expressed it with Mark, is that everything was suggested to replace. There wasn't any comments in regards to refurbishing. And I have, I have the utmost respect for our fire department, and I, I respect their needs to have equipment that is above reports super bowl and, and be able to respond. But I'm not sure that simply replacing them is that, I still don't think that that's the only option that we have. And I did notice in their proposal and scope of work that they did have an item for discussion regarding the advantages and disadvantages of replacing apparatuses. And one of the things I want to come out of this is to really consider if our apparatuses are good candidate for refurbishing. I think it can save us a considerable amount of money in a time when we don't have a lot. And when you think about what they were requesting is $2.5 million over five years, that's a big part of the capital expenditures for the city Ketchikan for those five years. That, that majority, we have other needs yet, and yet we still have to do this kind of stuff. So when we first got into this, there was a refurbishing company that Mark had talked to, and they were willing to come up on their own. So I think that's something we should still consider as another option. It's just, I think for that type of investment, the more information we have, the better.
I agree.
Nick?
Yeah, I, I don't want to repeat much of what Bob said, but I, in summary, I agree. I think we need another party besides this one because I, I wasn't impressed with the credentials of refurbishing on here. This is a good outfit for evaluating the fire department and all the equipment, but I didn't, I didn't get a feeling about refurbishing and taking care of equipment. So I, I think this one will give us some idea. And if we can bring that refurbishing company up, they give us an idea in the long run on a $2.5 million project, this is still, both of them together is still cheap.
Anybody else? Call or roll?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Bob.
I believe the chief came up. Did you have something to add, Admiral?
Admiral Hoag, Fire Chief, I just wanted to share with you, I've, I've had several conversations with ESCI since we've met with Mr. Flora as well. And we've, I've discussed with him specifically several times refurbishment and reconditioning type of options. And the gentleman who will actually be doing the, the assessment, he, he's a fleet management guy. That's what he did while he was in the fire service, 40 years in the fire service, but a majority of that time doing fleet management. I've got a two-page email from him with considerations for refurbishment, and he, he definitely is knowledgeable on it from what I've discussed with him. And I think you, that we probably will get a good piece of information, what, what you guys are looking for with that piece of discussion. And so I, I appreciate the discussion on that, and we look forward to bringing that forward.
Kelly?
So I'm kind of confused here. Does someone already come up and done that?
No, no, they haven't.
You'd be getting some.
But they're talking about that, it doesn't, they're saying from this report that they probably need to be replaced.
We don't have a report from them yet. That's what they're going to do, is they're going to take a look at the current condition. They're going to give us recommendations based on the condition as far as replacement, refurbishment, what the status of the fleet is.
Okay, because just from, and maybe I'm misunderstanding Mark's comments that we need a second opinion based on, they haven't had one yet?
What I heard was the concern is that from what was available on their website, that they didn't highlight their refurbishment discussion that they can have for us. But they, the reason that's not highlighted on their website is typically they do this as part of much larger projects, so they don't have it focused down to that level. But I've asked them to narrow their scope specifically to this discussion for us because we're not looking at doing a full department assessment, we're looking at doing the vehicle assessment.
Judy?
The firm that you were talking about, Bob, that was the one you brought up the first time, I think, is it, what's the cost of them coming up there? Weren't they willing to come up fairly reasonable?
If I recall the discussion, that they were willing to give us an assessment, and they thought maybe they could even do it just by sending pictures and files, which, which is probably good too, they'll give us some cost. Our concern with that, when, when we talked about it initially, is that they have a vested interest in saying, here's what it's going to be to do. They're not going to, they're not going to give us the pros and cons of the two. And I think that's what we'll get from this company. And then potentially, if we decide that refurbishment is the way to go, yes, we probably want to have a couple different people give us information on how they would propose doing that to meet our needs.
Have we spoken to any of the people that they've done this for in the past?
I have, I have not. They're in the middle of the Matsui Valley refurbishment right now, so it's a little premature to talk to them, but I'd be happy to get ahold of them and, you want some references?
I'd just be curious to see what people thought of it, you know, what they do.
Are you talking about the people we're talking about tonight with 8,400?
Right. Like past, I mean, I still think that we, I mean, 8,400 bucks.
I thought you meant the, the other folks.
No, 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 I mean, the people that we're looking at tonight.
The people that we're looking at tonight are well-known in the, in the fire industry and well-qualified. And I have several pages of references. Actually, we, I think I supplied several of them in the, and they were included in the packet.
Kelly?
I think it just would be nice to see what other communities that have done it in the past, to have a, like a couple of years in on this, say about how it's been.
And these people won't be doing the work. I think if we go to a refurbishment, the, the place that we discussed, that was discussed at the original meeting, not even the original meeting, but the refurbishment place, absolutely... And these people won't be doing the work. I think if we go to a refurbishment, the the place that we just, that was discussed at the original meeting, not even the original meeting, but the refurbishment place, absolutely, before we have them do work, I think we want to see, is it quality work? Are people happy with it? Did it meet their needs in the end, or was it a waste of money?
Anybody else before we call the roll? Caller roll. Thanks, Chief.
Yes. Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer? Kus?
Okay.
That passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seventy-eight-six, sale of six twenty-three Gateway Court, former Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility. I think there's like three different ways we can go at this time. Do we have a motion?
I think there's one on here, though.
Yeah, there's a motion.
Your Honor, I move the City Council direct staff to take such action regarding the disposition of six twenty-three Gateway Court, the former Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility, as determined appropriate by the council.
Second.
Thanks, Dave. Under the manager's thinking, he had three things, he has three options. We can go out to advertise and redo the bidding to sell the property at fair market value, or we can adopt a non-emergency ordinance authorizing the sale of the property without establishing a minimum price, but give us the right to refuse all bids. Or the C can seek and identify, transfer the property to a nonprofit public service organization with appropriate revisionary clauses. Or we can do that. Any ideas from the council? Mark?
When this came up last time, I had questioned the the sale of this at one point four million dollars. I thought then was a complete non-starter. So we've expended more time and put X amount more dollars into just keeping the building alive, and it's and it's borne no fruit at all. I think the next best option before we look at getting rid of it or granting it to a nonprofit is, let's just see if we can get something for this. It's a special use institutional building that has no market appeal. So we're going to keep pumping money into heat and electricity while it slowly falls down. And if we don't do something pretty soon, we're going to wake up in five years and have something that's worth nothing.
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Bob?
Yeah, I I I think we should put into this motion to use option two for the first go around. And I think that we should take on recommendation that we have the right to reject all these.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else?
I I'd agree with that, because I think we ought to keep all our options open right now. We don't know what's going to come up, and if we can get anything out of it all, we're ahead. And if we don't, then we're, do something.
Your Honor? Yeah.
Steve, could you ask Public Works if they could give us a breakdown on the utility bill? I I know that you gave us some ballpark stuff here, and and I think there's got to be a workaround in the one thousand dollar water one. And maybe have some discussions about that. And it may take care of itself in a metered rate structure if we get to that point at some point in time.
So is everybody interested in option two?
Yeah, might as well see what we can get.
I think that gives management direction. Steve?
I just want to make sure there was a motion on the floor.
I don't, we just have to give direction.
Right, so.
The direction.
So it's a no formal motion, but just staff direction, just look at option two and bring something back.
Correct. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to seventy-eight-seven, boat trailers, non-motorized vehicles parking on city streets. Somebody make the motion?
I move the City Council direct staff to take such action regarding a pro, prohibit, yeah, of non-motorized boat, um, boat trailer vehicles parking on city streets as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Thank you. We have a second? All right, anybody have any comments?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I guess I'd ask Joe to come up and talk a little bit about this particular item. I I know we went down this road quite a while ago, and and some of the comments that we had, the boats that are parked on, like, Third Avenue are, they fall within side of the ordinance just fine right now. Is that correct?
The streets that are signed no parking, I know they're the ones for sure that are under twenty-eight feet. I think it came to light recently that I don't believe all the streets under twenty-eight feet have been signed. So once that's established, then we have a greater area of enforcement that we could probably pick up. I don't know what streets those are offhand until we get some measuring stuff.
Yeah, that one on, up there at the top of Jefferson, there going up to school where they all park, that is wide enough. It's just that they put those trailers there right when you make the curve, and you don't make it sharp enough, you'll run into the trailer. So I don't know if that, maybe mark it so we can, they're not so close to the turn, but, but otherwise they're within the bounds of the ordinances. So, Joe, do you think we should take, hit all the streets that are under twenty-eight with signs, or is there certain streets where we're fined in boats and we should just hit those?
For us to enforce it, we need to have the signage up. So if there's streets out there under twenty-eight feet, they, we've, we've been unaware of those, that they were in violation. We don't routinely measure them, so we, we get a complaint, we look for a sign. If there's a sign, we issue a ticket. We get ahold of owners, get them moved. If we show up on a call and there's no sign, it's not signed, and we assume that it's a legal street to be parked on.
Nick?
Yeah, just, you know, sometimes we can establish rules or measurements, and, and the situation on the ground doesn't fit it, even though it fits it. And and I can think of some places in that curve you're talking about there, maybe we need to figure out a way to sign it and say no boats.
Back them off in the corner.
Because I know a lot of times, there's corners that people, we don't have any yellow lines on them, and they need yellow lines on them. There was one at my house there, and it got fixed, because it was dangerous trying to make a corner, especially in the winter. So we, we just need to look at the situation, I think, and if we need to fix something, maybe we need to fix something, but otherwise, no parking, a boat sign goes up, I'd, well, I'd say, if we can handle that.
I know there's some intersections that line of sight would be, you know, if they're so close to the corner, there's a line of sight issue, and I understand that. If we can get them painted yellow, get something up there, no parking, pass this sign, that's stuff we can enforce.
Bob?
We're a boating community. People have boats. Not all of them probably have off-street parking. And I don't want to create a situation where if there's not really a problem, that we're making an enforcement on a guy and doing something else with that. But I think there should be some way we can take care of these problem areas, say, site distance, close to the corners, busy intersections, that kind of thing. And I think that's where the concerns are at, because not all the boats that are parked there are a problem. And so I think the ordinance probably reads okay in general prospect, but if there's some things that we need to do to, to help correct some of the instances that we're talking about, where there's real narrow streets that that impede traffic, or snowplow work, or whatever we're doing there, or like, say, one that's really close to the corner, because we do have some standards for distance from corners and stuff for site distance. I guess I, I don't know what the, the legal terms would be for that, but I I think that I'd be careful changing this too drastically. So I I think maybe if you go back and talk to Mitch and and take a look at some of that, if somebody has some problems, like, we can figure out what to do with them.
And if we have some problem areas, please call us, and I'll work with Mark Hilson, and we'll, we'll figure out if they, if those streets are wide enough to have boats, if they're not, and and line of sight things, again, we can work with Public Works and get some stuff done, too, to to make it a safer area, but.
I think I'd like to do it on a case-by-case basis.
I think that would be.
I'll bring up my case. Yeah. Kelly?
We'll send you some.
I know, like, on Third, there's several boats by my house that aren't an issue, but I do know that there, at one point, it got to the point where the trailers weren't being maintained, wheels were going flat, people weren't taking care of their property, or they weren't even registered. So they got, it not actually worked out, because some people could actually park their vehicles, too.
Correct. And and some of these are going to be, it's, it's either going to be maybe a boat trailer, no parking issue, or it could be an abandoned vehicle issue if it's not drivable on streets or not registered. So there are different things that we we look at when we deal with some of these problems.
So then we do have a, a, a rule similar, I mean, Harbors have a rule that you can't, your, your boat's got to be able to move. So I assume we have a similar rule for, for trailers?
And vehicles, correct. And that would be, they, they fall under an abandoned vehicle ordinance we have, so like, flat tires, things of that nature, engines laying out of the car, things that, it's not movable, it's abandoned, and we can start a process on that to either get them removed or or get them up and running or.
So I guess that direction is a case-by-case basis, we should bring up, or if somebody else brings it to us, we bring it to Joe.
Yeah, I, I think just to public, it'd be nice if you use some common courtesy. Some streets have very restricted parking, and for you to take your boat and park it in front of somebody else's house and restrict that is probably not just being a good neighbor, so I think that use some consideration when you're doing those things.
One of those issues is the mailman. That was one of our big issues, was that our mailbox was blocked, so then the mailman wasn't, you know, coming. He was complaining, he thought it was ours. So I think that's where, like, if it's in front of your house and you want to deal with that, that's your prerogative, but other people shouldn't be dealing with.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have to vote on that motion. That brings us down to seven B one, ordinance eighteen eighteen sixty-nine, increasing electrical rate five percent first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve a first reading, first number eighteen eighteen sixty-nine, increasing electrical rate, establish a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second. According to our management, our five percent is going to cost you probably about five dollars and sixteen cents extra a month. But it's aimed at replace, I mean, to, trying to make our electric budget in the black instead of the red. Anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, I, I think that just note that the electric utility currently running a deficit of one point two million dollars, and we're going to cut that to approximately six hundred and forty-two thousand in two thousand and eighteen and four hundred and forty-six thousand in two nineteen, assuming that we don't increase anything in operations. We can't continue to run a utility in the, in the deficit and use reserves forever.
Caller roll.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to seven B two, ordinance eighteen eighteen seventy, increasing water rates, except, except for seafood processors by five and a half percent, increasing seafood processors, so water rates by thirty-five percent first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Judy.
I move the City Council to approve a first reading ordinance number eighteen dash eighteen seventy, increasing water rates, except for seafood processors by five and one half percent, increasing seafood processor water rates by thirty-five percent, establishing a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second. Judy, do you want to say anything?
Uh, no, I think we have discussed this before, and we're just continuing on what we had decided.
Your Honor, that, I think, residentially, that's going to be about two dollars and eighty-six cents a month. And presently, the water utility is running at a deficit of four hundred and nine thousand, and we're going to reduce it to approximately a hundred and eighty-nine thousand in two eighteen and a hundred and seventeen thousand, still running in the red, but not as much of a deficit.
Caller roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Kifer?
No.
Seivertson?
Yes.
All right. That passes five to two.
Mayor Williams, I just want to add one thing, just, just in case somebody wonders, what about the cruise ships? It'll be seen in first reading, next meeting, a twenty percent increase for the cruise ships, which are already in the black as far as for KPU water, but we're going to make it even more black.
So, thank you very much.
Just in case somebody says, why weren't they around here? You're going to see it. It's going to be twenty percent.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hey, that brings us down to number eight vouchers for the Daily News, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move for approval of vouchers to the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Caller roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Sure.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to nine. Manager's report. Steve, anything to add?
You want me to do it? Okay, all right. If you have questions, Andy can address them, but he advised us today that with the unit number four out of Beaver Falls, being out of commission right now, they've been doing a pretty heavy draw on Swan Lake. Uh, it's going to reach the point within the next probably two weeks, we might have to be doing some diesel runs during the week. Also, if it does get down in the teens like this weekend, due to the capacity, good chance they might have to do a diesel run when it gets down in the teens, just, just to make sure we have enough, not, not just to keep the draw from going down, just to make sure that we can keep everybody warm, so.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Steve?
No, and it's unfortunate that we're going to have to maybe burn some diesel in regards to this project, and reading the memo in regards to, you know, our, our maintenance plan, and for those, I understand that we were under some budget constraints, but I think that was last done in two thousand and fourteen, Andy, is that about right? Because we decided to look at one in two thousand and fifteen, so it had to be, we had to do our review of those two machines in fourteen, I think. But now we have, now we have the equipment in-house to do the, the conditioning or check the condition of the turbines, of the rotors.
Yeah, Andy did auto KPU electric. So we have, we have the equipment. We also did assessment here today with the group that's doing the rewind of of Beaver Falls four. We did the assessment of Beaver Falls three, so we'll have that. And then there's only a couple more over in Ketchikan Powerhouse. So yes, we, our plan is to have a plan to, to assess those and schedule those also. But I just want to get the dates right. So two thousand and fourteen, we did Beaver Falls one, two thousand and fifteen, we did Bee, we did Ketchikan Powerhouse three.
So the last time we did an assessment was in two thousand and thirteen, because we must have had a contractor in to, to take a look at those, to make the decision to refurbish it, is that right?
Uh, thirteen for forty, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Steve?
Mayor Williams, I have one more thing.
Go back.
Carl is scheduled to come back from vacation Saturday on sixty-seven. I'm scheduled to depart on vacation on Saturday on sixty-two, so for that brief period of time when we're both.
You want me to take over?
I've already told, I've already told Mark Hilson that since being a Saturday in, in the winter, if there are any complaints or problems, it's probably going to come from his department anyway, so. I, I, I'm hereby anointing him until Carl gets back on sixty-seven.
Assuming Carl gets back.
Right.
Party!
All right, that brings us down to City Clerk's file. City Attorney's file.
Love you, Your Honor.
We're still doing the executive session? Future agenda items? Mayor, Council comments. Mark?
Listening to the folks from Moffett Nickel over these last several meetings, I've become more and more concerned that we are just built out as a tourist community, and I think it's really important that we tread lightly. Their job is to plan the port expansion and the uplands expansion, and so it's not in their area of responsibility, but there's never a discussion about the impacts of this industry on the locals. That's who we work for. And when we're talking about ninety percent increase in passengers at any given berth, we all know what it looks like now downtown on a busy summer day, so just try to wrap your heads around that. Along those same lines, we just voted three times to increase rates, going back to the budget. It accounts for about eleven dollars and two cents more for household per month. I wasn't even aware of this till recently, that by law, we can't get any money from the cruise lines to help out with the infrastructure that they're helping tearing up. And I would love to see the day when the cruise lines want to help out with some of that stuff. We've all seen our roads, our sidewalks, we've got twenty-seven miles of sewer main that need to be replaced, and if their rationale is that that's what you have sales tax for, we can see that comes up far short of what we need to accomplish to take care of our own house. That's all I got, Your Honor.
Well, that Juno lawsuit with the industry is going to really be an impact on if we can use that money for such things, if Juno wins, so that's going to be a really. Well, that Juno lawsuit with the industry is gonna really be an impact on if we can use that money for such things, if Juno wins, so that's gonna be a really, I mean, everybody in the whole country's looking at this, because it's not gonna be just affect the ports in Alaska, it's gonna affect the ports everywhere in the US. It's really an interesting lawsuit. Thanks, Mark. Um, Dave?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Billy?
I will not be at the next meeting, so I would just ask to be excused.
Got you, no problem. Um, Jolly?
Well, I will agree with Mark on his comments regarding the cruise lines. Some of the things I've been reading and actually, um, researching, there are multiple communities, including Spain, Italy, who have jumped on board with Norway and Greece, who have limited the number of people coming into their ports due to not only the infrastructure issues, um, the driving and prices of property up to the point where their locals are leaving, um, we kinda see that a little bit here. Um, and also the detriment to the, um, environment. Um, on another note, I just got back this morning from my statewide independent living, um, coun, first council meeting, and met with, um, several of our reps, all our reps, including some of the general reps regarding, um, the bills that are coming up for, which actually is a good thing, because they're not cutting a lot of the funding for independent and, um, assistant living programs. They are actually looking at adding, um, a bill to add a one-cent charge that's usually on, there's a nine-cent charge on landlines for, um, um, that goes towards helping assisting our seniors and people with disabilities in, um, the independent living programs. Um, they're looking at taking that and putting a one percent char, or one cent charge on cell phones, which will increase that revenue, um, instead of having that huge burden on landlines, so that they can, um, bring in more revenue to help with, um, the assistant living. There's an increase in our elder population, people are not leaving the state for, to retire, um, most of them are staying. So it's a, like, a fifty-seven percent increase, and we're only gonna see that going up. That was a good meeting.
Thank you very much. Judy?
Nothing today.
Dick?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, one is, uh, last fall or sometime there, we said, or winter, we talked about the commercial rates with meters. And I'm getting more and more feedback from different groups that are either nonprofits or some type of group that's got these lines coming in, and, and their costs are extorting it, like the building out there we talked about from, uh, from the detention center, and so I know Steve probably doesn't know, but we gotta get ourselves and get that decision made so that we get these rates down for these people that are and, and get it metered so that they know what their panels are using only. The other one is, I, I ran into a few people the other day that, uh, commented that, uh, they'd like to be able to come to me, but the meeting notice is sent there in the paper the day before. It's hard sometimes to get somebody there, so I said I would suggest that maybe we can, maybe we can put the meeting notice in the paper on Monday and, or sometime earlier, and then we just put a little blurb saying we need on Thursday night in the meet, in the notices in the day before or something, but the earlier we could get it in the paper, I think would help some people plan to be here and do a little research.
Any, anything else, Dick?
Uh, yeah, one other is, since we, we talked about the impact of the cruise ship companies, um, you know, the passengers coming to town, I, I think we need to be careful about what we try not, or try to restrict them, I know a number of people, myself included, don't want 20,000 people in town a day. That's too many, but I think if we're smart about how we deal with these docks, we will constrict that anyway by only a big ship on, say, one, and a big ship on four, if we can come to some agreement there. A small ship on two, and then a medium one on three, we, we, we set it by doing it there rather than just growing and growing and growing, and so, uh, but if we cut that, that tax off, because they, if they bring the bigger ones in, they can't stop. And I know they don't wanna tender, if, you won't, they won't tender a big ship in here at all, it's just, it's a pain. We lose not only the sales tax, working, and we may lose property tax. Now, if you can get me back a 200 million foot a year timber industry, hey, let's see what we can do, because we're gonna put year-round employment here, but right now, we're, we don't have good employment for the rest of the year, and so we need to do what we can within reason, and I agree with Mark, we gotta remember the local people. Uh, and, um, but it's gotta be a balance, so let's keep ourselves balanced if we can. That's all I've got with it.
Thanks, Nick. I have two things, um, on the cruise ship, then the good news is, they can't make the ships any bigger unless they change the Panama Canal, so.
Well, there is a limitation.
There's an limitation right there.
They couldn't do it the first time, you know?
Right.
So the, the Ca, Panama Canal will only fit, uh, um, thousand, twen, or twelve-hundred-foot ship, so.
So they can go up another 200 feet?
No, they can go up another 50 feet. The big ones are at 1150.
The big ones, they're planning to... The locks are 1200, and the biggest ones are planning to send now or 1150.
So we do have some limits there, and I think if we, um, follow our plan, we'll be able to, um, you know, we won't have a, um, four or five big ships sitting here in front of us every day, I don't think that's the vision it's gonna take, and it'll take over years. But I think we can, um, plan for it, I mean, the impact of the cruise industry is so great on the community, and especially the city, I mean, we've took, you know, years ago, one of our fallacies was, well, let's take, uh, um, the sales tax money and utilize it, instead of just putting it in the sales tax one, and so we offset, um, our property tax by that. Our mill rates down because we use a lot of re, on sales tax from all the cruise industries, so. There's impacts, I, I understand Mark and Jolly's concern, and I think, um, we should always keep that in mind as we're doing this, but I think, um, we can, um, come up with a plan that, um, keeps us from overwhelming ourselves. Second of all, there's a letter on the table from, I wrote to the Alaska Infrastructure Gas Company. They, um, want to do some, um, gas utilities really up in the Anchorage area, but they have to get the gas out of Bridge Rupert, and they wanna bring it here and use this as our, their sort of station area. And, um, but there are gas utility, and they'll be providing, um, natural gas here in town, and, um, I just wanted to make sure you guys had no problem with me writing this letter in support of them, because it would bring some jobs to Ketchikan if they do, um, make this a facility where they, um, stir their gas and barge it out of here to, um, up north, so. Is there anybody that has a problem with me sending that letter?
I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Your Honor, I'm just curious, who is it going to, is it going to the state regulators?
It's going to the Alaska Infrastructure Gas Company, and they've been working with Ada, the state. The governor's office wants a copy of it, and they're just out there lobbying these guys, and wants to make sure that the community is supporting. All right, I shall send it away to them tomorrow, and I thank you very much.
I made one suggestion.
Oh, yes, we did make, in the last winning conclusion, the city of Ketchikan is interested in the prospects of establishing a gas utility, instead of in favor.
Let's back off now.
Very good. So that brings us down to our final business.
Yeah, Your Honor, I have one more.
You bet.
I just, I think that I'd like to express it to the parents and the families, the lost loved ones, and that recent school shooting down south, it, it doesn't make any sense to me, and, um, it's such a tragedy that I, I think that, uh, we should all keep them in our mind.
Thank you, Bob.
The White House and the governor's office this afternoon, uh, flags, both flags at half-staff until Monday at sunset, so if you're wondering why they're down right now, that's why.
Thank you. Okay, brings this executive session, uh, request for the executive session, claim of Crescent Key Inc. regarding Valley Court, right away, do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move the City Council to fair that consistent with the City Attorney's request dated February second, 218. It is in the best interest of the City Council to discuss the pending claims of Crescent Key Inc. And give direction to the City Attorney in handling the matter in executive session with Ketchikan Mistle Code two-point-zero-four-point-zero-two-five A one and A one B and A three, which include the need to discuss the subject and knowledge of which would have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and call her on, please.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kiper?
Yes.
Cuse?
Yeah.
Gage? Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Abstain.
That's right.
Flora?
Yes.
All right, that passes six, so with one extension, Judy, are you gonna stay out of the meeting?
Yes.
All right, um, let's, here, go take care of it.
You have to go over it.
No, I won't.
Okay, we're back in regular session, we just finished the executive session, and, um, we have a motion, Bob?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to approve subdivision improvement compromise and lease agreement with Crescent Key Inc. For the proposed, uh, resolving the Valley Court claim and authorize the city manager to transfer funds from appropriate reserve necessary to fund the city's obligation under the agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the City Council.
Second.
Moved in second, any comments? Call her on.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kiper?
Yes.
Cuse?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
And...
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing, that brings us to the final motion of the evening.
I move to adjourn, yes. You like that motion?
Julie, are you going on vacation or work?
I'm going to Africa, on vacation.
Oh, excellent, where are you gonna go?
Guinea, West Africa.
How long is it gonna take you to get away from there?
Twenty-eight hours.
So they give you a bandolier and a sidearm?
Yeah.